Just stand for a moment of silent prayer followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Ken?
I already did that.
Yeah.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Interviews for Environmental Advisory Board, Richard Wissing. Richard, are you here? Come forward, tell us why you want to serve and what you want to try to accomplish.
It's just a continuation. I've been on it for two years. Just push more recycling, clean up the city.
Amen.
You got one vote right away.
I was gonna say, amen.
But she had two votes, there we go.
It's a never-ending job.
All right, questions?
Thanks for applying.
Thanks for applying.
Thanks for your service.
Other people should. I would have quit because it's a good opportunity for other people, but guess they can't replace me, so I think.
Thank you.
Thank you. Human Rights Commission, Chris Jensen. Tell us a little bit about why you want to serve on the Human Rights Commission.
Okay. I'm looking at this commission as something I'd like to serve on. I have recently retired, I have the time available. I have spent a number of years teaching at Western Iowa Tech in a master's program in public administration. I've taught issues in regards to equal rights. I understand the process, the protection nature of what this commission has to do, and I think that I could lend some insight and it would be a good fit, so that's why I'm interested.
Any questions? Good. You went to the University of South Dakota?
I went to the University of South Dakota and I received my masters from there. I went to Briar Cliff also, got my BA from there, and the University of Iowa.
That all sounds good to me.
Yeah.
I've taught for Western Iowa Tech and then I've taught for Bellevue University in Omaha, Nebraska, on a master's level.
All right.
Sir?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate you coming down. Billy Oider? Billy here?
He's calling in.
Robert Stewart?
Thank you for having me today. I'm Robert Stewart, I live here in Sioux City. I've lived here, let's see here, lived in Sioux City about 37 years total. I'd like to serve in the Human Rights Commission. This is an area that I'm very interested in and very passionate about. I am an attorney at Great West Casualty Company, been there since 2017. Prior to that, I was in private law practice in Sioux City. I practiced employment law and have handled employment discrimination cases on both, both on behalf of individuals and on behalf of businesses. I also studied civil rights and employment discrimination law in law school. It's an area, again, it's an area that I'm very interested in, I'm very passionate about, and I think I would, I have the knowledge of relevant law areas as well as a skillset to be an effective member of the commission, and I would be honored to help move the commission's mission of eradicating discrimination forward.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate your interest. Thank you. For applying. All right, we will move on to the consent agenda today, which is items through three through 17. Consider those items to pass unanimously unless a separate roll call votes asked for by a council member. If you want to come and speak on an item, as I read it, please state your name and address so it can be recorded. If you want to come up on an item not on the agenda, please come up under Citizen Concerns. Again, state your name and address for the record. I'll move the consent agenda. Second. Three is the reading of the city council minutes of February 11th and 12th. Four is a motion acknowledging the Board of Adjustment Actions of February 12th. Five is a resolution approving a fee schedule for advertising on city buses. Six is a motion appointing Jeff Lamorey to the Parking and Skywalk Board of Trustees for a partial term expiring December 31st, 2020. Seven is a resolution temporarily closing downtown streets March 4th and 5th for the Symphony's Kids Show at the Orpheum Theater. Eight is a resolution approving a contract and salary schedule with the Police Officers' Association. Nine is a resolution proposing to sell property at 3615 7th Street, the petitioner Darrell and Karen Neen. Ten are resolutions awarding a purchase order to CW, CDW Government for fiber channel switches. Eleven are actions relating to grants. A is a resolution authorizing utilities to accept an ARRA grant to conduct an energy master plan at the wastewater treatment plant. B is a resolution approving and accepting a grant agreement from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for the 2018 self, family self-sufficiency program funding. Twelve are actions adopting construction documents. A is a resolution approving or adopting plans and specifications for the Cheyenne Boulevard Water Main Repair Project. B are resolutions adopting plans and specifications for the South Alice Street and Lindenway Water Main Repair Project. Thirteen are actions relating to agreements and contracts. A is a resolution approving an amendment number one to the agreement to the, with the IEDA and Baumgars. B is a resolution approving amendment number two to the contract with the IEDA and Seaboard Triumph. C is a resolution approving an amendment number one to the Consulting Services Agreement with Calhoun Burns for the Dearborn Boulevard Bridge over Perry Creek Project. D is a resolution approving a consulting services agreement with Snyder for the traffic study project.
I had a question about that one. Just looking at the bids, Gordon, I was wanting to make sure, I think I highlighted on here, yeah, after comparing the consultants, you all ranked them as far as making the recommendation for what company to go with, is that correct? It wasn't based solely off cost?
Gordon Ferris, City Engineer. That's correct. We actually ranked them first, then we get, we got proposals from the top two, excuse me.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that, obviously, I want to go to the local company if at all possible, but if it was ranked before then and preference was given, I understand. I just wanted to double check.
Isn't it possible for us to do that yet, though? Because it's certainly less than 2%. The bids.
Well, and that's the point I was making. We are going off of dollars alone, I think I would have said, let's go with local, but if the recommendation was made to use this company...
But we always go off low bid, right?
I would...
And they are the low bid.
I would say, we deem that both the firms are qualified to do the work. They, they point totaled, Snyder was higher than McClure, but I mean, I would say they're both qualified firms, and yes, it is a very, very close what their proposals were, so I mean, it would...
It's a, it was about $113 by my calculations and about a third of 1%, so certainly within the 2%. And it is, it would be a local...
Understanding that in...
Company.
In the point totals, proximity was taken into account, just so you know.
That is correct.
When we, when we do our rating system, there is a five, five of the 100 points are designated towards local.
They were given preference, but then Snyder came in above them as far as your ranking.
Yep, that's correct.
How does that work? Is that different than our normal bidding process?
Yes, because they did a request for proposals versus a bid.
Okay.
So when they do the request for proposals, they don't take into consideration just the pricing, they take into consideration a wide variety of things.
And if they give them credit for being a local, then you, that somehow balances out in their decision-making?
Well, the way I'm taking it is, it's like, well, you're given a leg up for being a local company already, so when it comes to this stage, your leg up either should have awarded you that and you should have got it, or not, it was taken in consideration before.
That's correct.
But that's kind of an arbitrary decision made by the panel, and these are real dollars and cents, and certainly within our right to...
Amber Crackwood, an RFP, price isn't always the decider, so the council could choose to award.
If it was less than 2%.
Even over 2%. As an RFP, you have the, staff recommends who they feel the most responsive proposal is, but you have the right to award the proposal to whomever you would like.
You're not bound to the percentage difference.
You're not bound to the percentage difference.
No, but you are given the opportunity if it's 2% or less. I mean, we could do the other, but you better be able to articulate.
That policy doesn't...
The policy doesn't, yeah, the policy doesn't even apply in this situation because it's a request for proposal, not...
It's not a hard dollar bid.
Okay, all right.
So you can, you convince me, you could award, no, you could, what they're saying is you could award no matter what you want, even if they were higher.
No, I understand that.
You could do it.
But in this case, because it was an RFQ instead of an RFP...
No, you could, you could make a recommendation if you wanted to go, or with McClure, I mean.
But you're saying that...
You're not bound by the 2% limit, you're, you have the authority.
It could be 5% higher, you could give it to McClure.
Okay, but in this case, that's what attracted my attention to it, because it was less than 2% and this council has made that adjustment in the past.
And that's why...
And I'm wondering why we wouldn't do that now.
Because it's not a bid.
It's not the same.
That's what I was saying, that's why I wanted to clarify. I wanted to make sure it wasn't just the dollars.
Well, nothing against our grading system, but you're always going to give Snyder, based upon qualifications, they're always going to have a higher total.
I don't, I don't think the point...
When was the last time Snyder didn't get a traffic study?
They were actually really close, they were actually really close on the, on the qualification.
When was the last time Snyder didn't get a traffic study?
I don't, I don't know the last time we did it, I mean, they're often a sub to other people, but I don't know the last time when we actually awarded them a contract that was straight without. We could look that up, I don't know off the top of my head. It hasn't been since I've been here that we've done one. They've been a sub a lot of times, they do a lot of work for other firms, but we're, we're open, I mean, like we said, both these firms were qualified, that's why we negotiated.
Well, and, and for that reason, I understand the exceptions, and, and, and we could do it if they were $10,000 higher and we thought they were more qualified, but you're saying they're both qualified.
Yes.
And I can't think of any reason why we would not give it to a local company. So therefore, I would make the motion, I'm not sure exactly how to award it.
That you would award to McClure.
That I would award to McClure because I know that...
That's all you have to say.
But then would we ever have the preference, like, because I'm trying to, yeah, break it down, exactly, the dollar just doesn't matter here. And so I'm just saying, if preference given or you thought the better firm was Snyder, I want to, obviously, if you think that's, that's what the voting process came out in, unless you're telling me it was preparing apples to apples.
If it was, federal aid was involved...
If it was federal aid, you wouldn't be here.
Yeah, federal aid.
You wouldn't do it this way.
Yeah, federal aid, we would just do a straight qualifications base, and we would have come with just Snyder, and that would have been, we would have negotiated with a second firm, that's when you would, but they would have already been given a preference because we always have a 5% local, and typically what we say is, if you're in town, you get five points, if you're within an hour drive, you get four points, so it, it kind of moderates itself down as far as how, how close you are in proximity.
So I'm confused, I guess, by what you're saying then. Are you saying that this is apples to apples, or they were already given their preference before that, or the, in the point total?
They were given a preference in the point total, but we're saying that they're both qualified firms. I mean, we're not saying, in ranking, Snyder came up as the more qualified firm, but that was just based on their proposal. Both these firms are qualified to do the work.
Therefore, I would make a motion, if this is the right way to do it, to approve a consulting services agreement with McClure Engineering Company of Sioux City, Iowa, in the contract amount of $33,067.
Second.
Gerken?
I just before...
Moore?
You're all right.
I'm all for local, too, but the only reason why I have a problem with it is I haven't seen your evaluation. I mean, you're having me vote on something that you guys ranked, you came up with a decision, and now you're asking that I vote against that based on local. So why would you even want to, why would, why would we even want to have that process? And I want to respect the process, because if that's what you're going to use from time to time, I want all companies, local and outside of the Siouxland area, to know that you're going to negotiate with them in good faith. But that's the problem I'm having with it. I'm really struggling with it.
But that's why we, that's why we recommended the, the firm that A, had the highest point total and the best price. I mean, their point total was close enough that if McClure's price had been better, we would have come forward with a McClure recommendation that we would have felt that they were, their, their qualifications were...
If McClure would have came in 150 cheaper, you would have recommended McClure.
And it would have been based on, even though they were, they were, Snyder was more qualified, these were the two top, we had four firms that submitted, so we eliminated two of them, never even got a price proposal from them. We took what we took as the two most qualified firms and negotiated with them.
You're saying the points were that close?
Yes.
We just don't get the benefit of seeing what they are.
Yeah, and we, and we could have provided that to you if, if we were...
But my understanding is they both are qualified to do it.
Yes, we wouldn't have negotiated. If we had felt they were not qualified, we wouldn't have negotiated.
Yes.
Or that one of them would have done a subpar job or something.
Yeah.
But are we taking away from the integrity of the process?
I wonder as well.
If, if we're not, then I would, you know, I'd go local, too, but I just don't want to do anything that's going to hurt us in the long run with our reputation.
I think what Dave is saying is they're both close enough that the only reason Snyder was chosen is because they're $150 less. Other, other than that, they can live with both.
Well, they were, like I said, their point total, their point total was slightly more, but not to the point where I would say that, because we wouldn't have negotiated with McClure if we didn't think they could perform the work. So, we think that both firms can do the work, the designing overall factor was that they were cheaper.
No, if there was, since, we did do four, we did review four different proposals. If they, if one of the others would have been close enough, we would have given them the shot, chance, so, and vice versa, if there was no one close enough to Snyder, we would have just dealt with Snyder at that point, and if their, and if their price was way out of whack, then we would have gone back to, and relook at the others.
Darren Lightenberg with Snyder and Associates. I, thanks for having us here today and on the agenda. And this, this sort of discussion comes up frequently, and this isn't the only community that, that has questions as it relates to the differences between contractors' bids, where through state law, there are requirements to select the lowest responsive bidder versus professional services. It's treated differently across the board. Every city is a little bit different as it relates to how they rank things. It, it is a little uncommon, not, it's not real common to submit price with proposal. Obviously, we, we want to be looked at as a qualified firm that can do the work, and we hope that our reputation speaks for itself, and, and it does. Understand that there's obviously local, local issues, I think that the ranking that the city has does provide preference for local, and if, if they aren't the highest point getter based on the preference already given for local, I guess I'm trying to figure out, what's the diff, what differences, what, at what level does it not make a difference? That'll be the next question. Is 500, is it 1,000?
2%.
I don't think it's, yeah, I don't, in my mind, I don't think it's a dollar amount. I, I think it's at the point that we're advised by staff that both parties are capable and qualified to do the work. It seems responsible, to me at least, that it's a local company, and that we should be supporting local companies who bid and are, who are qualified and, and, who bid on the project and are qualified to do the work equally as well, and, and I, I just think that's the appropriate and reasonably prudent thing to do in this case, but, but I'm just one guy, so...
And I think what the gentleman is saying is that if this was a thousand dollar difference, he'll give them the preference. Or, and we would say, well, no, as long as it's within the 2%, we'll hear the 2% doesn't qualify. So then you get to Mr. Moore's argument of, well, are we degrading the integrity of the process, when we're saying, look, there is a point system for a reason, and that's why you have this. I mean, I think it's difficult, I get it.
But if they're... If staff is recommending them and saying they are qualified, why would we not? We're now not listening to staff. I don't, I don't know, if they're qualified, I don't know why we wouldn't accept them.
I don't want to certainly speak on behalf of staff, but there's pre-qualified firms in certain categories, right, Gordon?
Yes.
So there's, there's multiple qualified consultants, and then the proposal is there to provide the best understanding of the project and the approach and so on, so...
But once they review the, the bidders, they determine whether they're, I know you have to have certain qualifications in order to even be on the list to submit a qualifying bid, but at the point that staff says they're qualified and they can do the work, unless that's, if we're just, if the finances aren't an issue and we're just going on staff's recommendation...
Well, but I guess like staff said, that they were basically apples to apples, and the only reason you picked Snyder was because they were 137 or whatever off, 150 off.
Well, yes, that is correct, excuse me. Their qualifications were the same.
Yes.
When it came to the proposal, it was different, not just in money also, so...
So the qualifications are the same, but the proposal, was it ranked differently? Were there...
It wasn't really ranked, the proposal portion of it, it was, at that point, it was just dollars.
So their proposal are, in this case...
Well, we ranked all four, we ranked all four in McClure.
On their qualifications.
Snyder were the two high, they were the two best-ranked firms, so we negotiated with those two firms because they had the two best proposals. And I just couldn't tell you what the point total difference was between the two off the top of my head, but they were, I, I know they were relatively close, because I remember we looked at it.
Yeah, they were a couple of points, you remember?
Mayor, is there precedent, or, I mean, have you ever dealt with this before?
Oh, yeah, they don't, engineering firms don't like to even bid this way, they are too professional to bid this way, I'm the one that insists on it, and the rest of you thankfully have gone along with it, but, so... If we deferred this... I'm no friend of Snyder's today, saying that, I know, but that's, because you don't agree with the process, and I understand that, because none of you engineering firms like it, but it's one way to assure that we have, first of all, qualified people, and second of all, that the price is in the realm of reasonability, which has always been a concern of mine, the way...
And I don't think we've ever had one that's been as close as this one.
I'm sure you have, and that's kind of amazing.
I'm kind of surprised McClure isn't here. Or maybe, nah.
They spoke with us this morning about it, so I, I don't know if...
Well, they should have been here to speak to us.
Would there be any benefit if, to see in your point system, though? I mean, it seems like, is that, is that something you want to just keep?
It's not private, it's, they, they, they're all aware of it. Yeah, I...
Because you negotiated with both, I mean, I'm just, and I don't know what the extent of your negotiations would be, but you talked about consultant rankings, proposed scope of services.
Because we, there was, we did modify after looking at what their proposals were, we did modify the scope of services a little bit to, and that caused them to adjust their prices, but they, neither firm is told what the other firm's price is, and, and we don't even negotiate actual, if, if they have things in their scope that the other one doesn't, it's, so it's not necessarily, you have to, they have to provide us a scope that they believe, and this is a little bit simpler, because it's pretty straightforward, it's a traffic analysis, but they have to give us what they believe it, the effort it'll take to get it done, and, and a price based on that, and that's what both firms gave us, and we were satisfied with the price, and when we looked at the two prices, they're 100 and some odd dollars difference. We recommended...
I'm sorry.
No.
I'm going to assume that McClure probably didn't expect to get it, and that's why they're not here.
No, actually, they did expect to get it, they were unaware that we were also talking with Snyder, and they, they were...
But they weren't this, this...
But the reason they're not, the reason they're not...
No, no.
And I guess I just have to trust that you would come forward and the staff would say, look, we compared them, and we would go with this other company if they were head and, head and shoulders above, you know what I mean? That's why...
But it's no, it's no different than any purchasing, we're always going to recommend the one, and if you want to inject a local preference, that's up to the five of you. But, like I said, we, either firm is capable of doing the work.
Well, in, in going along with what Mr. Moore says, if we were to take a look at the results of, would, would that show us that, that Snyder's scope of services was...
I don't think you're going to see a marginal difference.
That's what I was wondering, yeah.
Yeah, it's not like you're going to see a 20-point gap in the two.
Yeah, oh my gosh, this is obvious.
That's what I was concerned about, that...
Yeah, no, it was, it, like I said, it was...
And that's what I'm thinking, if there is something obvious, you're going to come and talk...
I don't remember the exact point total then, but actually, all four weren't that far apart. I think one might...
Well, no, two, two of them are down on the list, but the four people that reviewed it, we were all very consistent with our rankings.
Okay.
I mean, it wasn't like I overruled everybody and said, no, we're going with Snyder, it was, they were one and two.
Do you happen to know the last time you had a contract with us? That was direct?
For traffic study? Probably about four years, three years, four years? Three years? I mean, we've done other traffic work, the Signal Out webinars, Outer Drive...
But those were subs.
Yep. That, no, that was a, that was a prime.
Okay.
That was a prime project.
Yeah, you had the one up.
You had the Outer Drive lights that I complained about on a weekly basis. You didn't win me over on that one. That was their job, and it, I know that was their job, and that was a prime to the city, so that's been within the last four years, I know.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Thanks, Gordon and Dave, for your... Start the roll call over, please.
I have some clarification on the record, that the motion that was made was to amend the resolution.
Yes.
Letting it to McClure.
Gerken?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
He has a resolution approving a settlement agreement with Ag Processing Incorporated. I'll go along with the recommendation of the city staff, but I don't know why we're paying for a private sewer line problem, but trust that Mr. Von Drack will take care of this at the end of the day, so... 14 are actions authorizing the issuance of checks. A is a resolution approving a settlement of a tort claim. I'd like to pull this one for a vote, please. Mark, I sent you a note on this, you didn't respond, but is it my understanding that there was water going to this house and no one was paying for it?
I'm sorry, Mayor, I was out for a family funeral, so...
I know, I understand, but I want to make sure before I vote, that...
Yeah, this is, this is more of a customer service issue, but I did talk to Joe Yurin just before meeting this afternoon, and just to kind of give you a background, I understand was, there were the two valve boxes, one of them did not have a valve cover on it, somehow it, it came up missing, so somebody went out to look at that, and they, the first valve cover that they found, that they could put on it, they put on it. It was mislabeled, and so the person went out...
I get all that.
Yep.
But it all started because somebody wasn't paying their water bill.
Right, and my understanding from customer service is that that will be, there will be a, have you been involved with this, Justin? Okay, that there's some conflict with their bill and, and they're disputing something, and so this will be deducted from that, or that we'll end up recovering the funds? But I'm sorry, it's not utility...
My point is, we wouldn't have a tort claim if they'd have been paying their water bill, because we wouldn't have been out there to shut off their water.
Yep, first I heard of it was your email, so...
I know, I should have probably, I didn't think to send it to Joe, I sent it to you. it to you, but, okay. Call the roll, please.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
No.
Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Gretchen?
Aye.
B is a resolution approving a settlement of workman's comp claim and authorizing payment. C is a resolution authorizing reimbursement against hospitality companies for electrical work required for the convention center parking deck project. D is a resolution approving accrued permanent partial disability payments as partial settlement of a workman, worker's comp claim. 15 are applications for property tax exemptions. 15 items, 15 A through H are resolutions accepting applications for property tax exemptions for improvements made to the property located within the urban revitalization area in the Hamilton Westley Way to urban revitalization area. 16 are application for beer and liquor license. See the list come forward if you have questions. 17 receipt of minutes. See the list come forward if you have questions. Anyone to be heard on any of those items, please come forward now. Seeing none, we will vote electronically, or you calling? Okay, call it.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Gretchen?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
18 is a hearing and ordinance adopting a site plan for 2015 West Sixth Street. P&amp;Z recommends a denial of this item. Mr. Gary, are you representing the P&amp;Z today?
Uh, yes, the vice chair, Susan Student, couldn't, student, uh, Susan Stewart couldn't make it, so she asked me to fill. Um, yeah, this was presented, there was, uh, presented, the petition was presented, site plan was discussed, uh, received a lot of public input, and we recommended denial on a 5-1 vote.
What's that?
I believe staff has a recommendation.
What's staff's recommendation?
City Council, Chris Madsen, senior planner. We have been, or the petitioner did outreach to staff late last week and did ask that this item be deferred to the March 11th meeting.
And why would, when, why would, I'm sure that most of these people didn't come down for a lesson in government today. They came down to hear this item. Why would we not have notified those neighbors? We had to know their names, Mr. Madsen, that.
That we were to defer? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, but now they have to come make plans to come back again, and I'm not really for that, no.
I didn't know that it was being deferred, because I spoke with some of them in the audience and encouraged them to come today as well.
I, I wish we would know that so we could tell people that they didn't have to come.
We didn't have time to be able to provide that notice to the neighbors.
I think they had a petition, didn't they? Did they have a petition?
Not on this item.
Huh?
That was a separate item.
There was no petition on this item?
You're talking about a petition for the site plan?
Against it, from the neighborhood.
Oh, oh, like a, a neighborhood petition?
Yeah.
All right. I don't know. I didn't remember seeing one.
No, we, we had, uh, opposition did show up at the planning and zoning commission that did speak out against it. Uh, there was a separate U.S. Cellular request that did have a petition in opposition.
There was a separate what?
There was an item, uh, there's a separate item that they actually ended up pulling from the planning and zoning commission, and that never did come forward to, uh, city council. We did not have an actual written opposition or petition on this item.
About the same matter, though?
A new cell tower, yes. This is their second request.
So they filled out, they, they filled out a petition to stop the cell tower, well, they pulled that one, and then they didn't have the formal petition for this one, but it was the same thing?
The same request for a new cell tower, yes.
In the same part of town.
Different cell towers. One had a petition, one did not, this one did not.
Right, the other item was closer to Unity School.
Oh, okay.
Chris, Chris, who's asking for the deferral?
Josh Watson with U.S. Cellular. They contacted us on, I believe it was Friday last week.
Defer it till what date?
March 11.
For what reason?
They simply stated their legal team wanted more time to review.
Are they here?
Don't believe so.
None of the individuals present at that meeting for U.S. Cellular are here in the audience now, I don't think.
That are opposed to it?
No, uh, um, there are several people up here that I recognize that are opposed to it, but U.S. Cellular does not, I don't see the same guy here from U.S. Cellular that was here before.
What are some wishes of the council?
I'm okay with the deferral.
Somebody's going to have to make a motion.
It's a terrible inconvenience for you, but.
Well, what are they going to come back and say with their legal team, I guess, is what I'm curious, is argue the setbacks, that we need to change that rule, and that the setbacks shouldn't be 200 feet, it should be 130, or what?
Well.
I couldn't speculate on their reasoning.
I can't either, but I mean, the setbacks are, are the setbacks. They are what they are.
Yeah.
You can't, you can't change that and then vote on the item. The ordinance is what it is, so.
Yeah.
So how's it ever going to pass?
I was going to say, so I would vote on it today then, I mean.
I'll move, our, well, we don't know that, though, Mayor. I mean, that's, that's the, that's kind of.
Well, you know what, as a convenience for these neighbors, that guy should have got a hold of them. That's what bothers me. They call here on Friday afternoon, knowing that we couldn't get a hold of these people, that, I'm sorry, I'm not a cellular fan. I've, I've made that very clear in these chambers many times. They're all about one thing, themselves. Hey, and I know my service could go off today with Verizon, and you know what, if it does, it does, but it's terribly inconvenient for working people to take the time out of their schedule to come down here when they got some high-priced attorney that they're paying out there today. Sorry, not, no disrespect meant for the legal profession, of course, you know that, but that irritates me, that they couldn't, if they really wanted to do that and be concerned about these neighbors, they should have phoned the neighbors.
And I, and I'm not taking, I'm not arguing with you, I'm not taking issue with you. I, I understand fully what you're saying. I, I'm just all about a fair hearing, that's all. And, well, typically, when someone asks for a deferral, we typically will grant that.
I just don't see a way of what they're coming back where I would.
Yeah, I don't either.
Well, and we won't know unless we give them an opportunity to, to present themselves, and I agree with Dan, that we've always given the deferments, and we want to hear from both sides, and, and I apologize as well, that if we'd have known in advance, we would have shared that information with you, but.
Well, this neighbor right is awfully close, and somebody could have called somebody, whether it be our staff, or somebody could have called two or three of the neighbors. We had to have it in the record, who they were, and said, you don't have to show up today. I, I'm disappointed that it.
Well, here, let me, let me ask you this. I don't know if we've done this before for sure, but couldn't we still take the testimony of those that are present today, even if we deferred it till?
They're going to have to come back, because if they're, if they're going to modify something, which is what they're going to do, because.
Well, that's true.
There's no way we can vote for this the way it is. It fails today.
I, I agree.
So if they testify today, and then they come back with a modification, that's not fair to them to not know what that modification is. That's the problem for me, because you know it has to be a modification, because it violates our zoning ordinance. There's no way we can vote for it, in my opinion, I don't know how we can.
Well, the only modification that they're, that the neighbors are going to want is that they're not going to be there.
Well, shrink the tower.
That's the modification, so.
That's what I'm saying, is shrink the tower and then argue the same way, so that's what they're going to do.
But that's all speculation.
Right.
Exactly.
Yeah, we, they gave you no idea what they want.
We've had a lot of experience with this.
I'm with Bear. I think it's wrong.
Just that their legal team was asking for a deferral.
Um, we've wrestled with, yes, it, we had a full testimony, uh, we had full testimony from U.S. Cellular and from the neighbors. We took, we discussed setbacks, we discussed modification of setbacks, and yeah, we don't know what their intention is as far as changes go, but it would be extremely difficult to modify this site, given the density of the neighborhood to fit a cell tower in this location with any reasonable setback, but I don't know what their intention is, um, but it would definitely be a, a challenging one at best.
Not that it would probably make any difference. You know me, hope springs eternal, right, Mayor? But I mean, if they withdrew it, that's one thing. If they decide, we're going to withdraw our application. If we voted up or down today, if it's voted down, is this, is this still the same ordinance that they couldn't come back for, what, another year? Or is it?
Right, they wouldn't be able to come back for 365 days unless they submitted a drastically different.
Yeah, for the same site.
Correct.
Well, if they shrunk the tower, that's a drastic change.
Setback requirements would remain the same.
Right, if you're not going to change the setback, that's our zoning ordinance.
Correct.
So the only way to make this legal is to shrink that tower, isn't it?
200-foot setback would still apply, regardless of the height of the tower.
But weren't they, I thought in the homework, it was saying that they could argue that the setback needed to be looked at.
Because it's a site plan request, the council does have the flexibility to reduce setbacks, as you would with any other commercial development that's requesting setback.
We, we might have that ability, but I'd, I'd just have to tell you, uh, then you're going to really open a can of worms about.
Yes.
Why have the 200 feet then? Really, I mean, it serves a purpose. You didn't make any representations other than you'd have to ask city council for a deferral.
Correct.
Correct?
Council is aware you must hear this issue within 30 days, and so March 11th would be the 28th day, and there would be, uh, no further deferrals after that.
Is there a motion to accept the deferral?
No, there's been no motion.
Anybody going to make one?
I, no, no, I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't know. It's, it's just that it's a tough call to make. What would P&amp;Z recommend to us? Your, I really rely on you guys for recommendations.
Obviously, it's your guys'. We, we've, we've been in a somewhat similar situation where U.S. Cellular on a different application brought forward and then didn't show up, and we were, felt the same way that you guys are feeling, some frustration that you guys knew this was coming. Why couldn't you get somebody here to represent? In that case, we did defer because there was questions that weren't to be answered. Um, the one challenge they're going to have with the site, even if you agreed to shrink those setbacks from 200, the closest neighbor, and this is, was my concern, I'm not speaking for the entire, um, commission, although I think a lot of commissioners felt the same, is is that the 130-foot tower, there's a neighbor within 90-some feet, there's, unless you shrunk that tower significantly, that neighbor is still going to be super close. Um, and then the question is, how, what tower size would be feasible, um, that would actually serve their purposes, uh, and still be in a reasonably safe area, even if you did say, we'll throw that 200 standard out, and we'll modify something on the fly. That's the challenge that I think we wrestled with, that it was just, there was too many, too many neighbors too close to, to accommodate the size of tower that they were asking for. Um, even if they dropped it to a 100-foot tower, you still got a neighbor within, less than that already, so, it, yeah, it, it, within not being here becomes a real challenge for you, and I understand the frustration.
I appreciate that, and, and you know, and Chris did a great job of, of the write-up. You know, when you tell everybody, when you tell the citizens, there are 13 items that you can't discuss, or you should not discuss because it, it isn't legal, you can't take those into consideration. Um, the points that they did raise, I thought were, were very good, so I, I guess I'm not going to make the motion to defer, Mayor.
I will. I'll make the motion to defer this item until March 11th, and for the primary reason, um, I, I just think it's our responsibility to hear both sides of the story, even if they do a lousy job of, uh, making contact with, with the people that most likely are, who will be affected the most by this. Uh, I, I, if it were going today, I'd, I'd deny it. I'd vote with staff and P&amp;Z, but I just think, in the interest of getting everybody's version of what's going on and dealing with this particular issue, we'll never know what U.S. Cellular says if we don't give them an opportunity. I wish they would have done it differently. They didn't do it differently.
You know, here's what I've, here's what I've said.
Yes, or have a representative here.
They, they called Friday. They knew that they, they wanted to defer, right? Why couldn't they have been here today?
Yeah, I, I agree with that.
You know, so, you know what?
And I wish everyone out there who was here for that, that's very reason would have been notified, too. It's.
I'll second the motion, because I think we should vote on everything, whether, even if I don't support it, so I'll second your motion.
Waters?
No, no, I'm sorry, but could I, could I have the benefit, though, of knowing if you would be able to come back on March 11th? The residents, the.
Raise your hand if you think you can come back.
I mean, I know that's far enough out, but I just, out of respect for you, because I read the write-up, and you guys did an excellent job of representing your concerns, so would you be able to be here on March 11th?
I'll be here even if I'm unable to.
Well, I know, it's, it's that important to you.
Our calendar, yeah.
Yeah. I, and I understand, and I just don't want to be disrespectful, but I do want a fair hearing, and you had a fair hearing before planning zoning, so.
It's very disrespectful to the people who don't speak English. None of them that, uh, don't like that they're like, some people didn't know that at all.
Okay. So we need to take care, we need to take care of that issue, but would you be able to make it March 11th, as far as you know?
Why don't you raise your hand, otherwise we got to have you come to the mic and, I think they're going to come because it's that important.
I was going to say, yeah, I was going to say, they're going to force themselves to be able to come. My whole thing is.
Uh, but I understand, but if they were going to be out of town or something, and you knew that you just couldn't make it.
See, and that's my thing, is U.S. Cellular could have sent a representative here today.
Well, no, they don't have any, whether they're going to be here on March 11th, they don't have any choice, because you got the 30-day, we have to decide this within 30 days, correct?
And they would have paid someone to have a representative.
You know, here's my.
So we also have more residents that aren't here because we didn't notify them.
Here's my question. How do we feel up here? Because I'm not going to vote for it. I'm with these guys, and, and we, and I'm going to guess that most of us know already how we feel, and so all we're doing is just pushing it off for three weeks.
Well, when Mr. Gary voted against it, which you are kind of the tower king, I'm not being critical, but. Uh, I don't think the tower king. You've had a tendency to support these more than others in the past, all I'm saying.
I've, I've been with.
But that has no bearing on it for me. If it doesn't meet the ordinance, it's not going to meet the ordinance, and I'm, I don't care what kind of site plan you want to do, it doesn't matter to me. That's why, that's why we have the zoning ordinance, basically. Maybe if this were.
That was a compliment.
What's that now?
That was a compliment.
Yeah, it was a compliment?
Yeah.
I was going to say, I didn't know if it was a good or a bad thing.
Compliment, so like.
You, more than any other commissioner, have been supportive of cell towers. I'm not saying you're wrong, I'm just saying that's, and when you vote against this one, it means that it must not be really good.
Yeah, it just, it, it, it was a, it was a real challenge to make, to, to justify this being so close to other homes.
Right.
This wasn't like an open field, like we faced in the past, or wooded area with substantial setbacks. It's just not that.
Or a large, empty lot with nothing around.
Yeah, and so it just, it, from a common sense perspective, was a real challenge, and they couldn't overcome that challenge in the testimony that they offered to the, to the zoning board.
Well, we don't, we don't have all of the residents, though, that we could have here either. That's what, saying, that's what I heard you say. I shouldn't have this discussion with you, I'm sorry. Need to have you come up to the mic, state your name and address if I do.
Ready for the call, or you want more input?
No, I'm ready.
I think it's your vote. I said no.
Capron?
No.
Gretchen? Gretchen?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Scott?
No.
So then we vote on.
Now, now we'll hear the regular. I'll, I'll move the recommendation of the planning and zoning.
Second.
So this is in denial, right?
Do we vote yes?
This is the original. You'll vote no. How?
I always get.
You remove the recommendation of planning zoning.
Of denial, so you'll vote yes.
Yes is denial, no is to approve.
Capron? Gretchen?
Yes.
Moore?
Yeah, don't you want to have input?
If you'd like to.
I'd like to.
Does anyone want to be heard on this item?
This is where you can come up and speak.
Well, yeah, because, I mean, that's why we, that's why a majority of the council wanted...
Correct.
Well, first of all, you know...
You just, you got to state your name.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. John Kobo. I live at 614 Turner, and my wife and I are present here. And our house is within that setback area, so like 180 feet, something like that, depending on who's counting, but it's documented that it's within there. But it's not only within there for safety reasons, but it's also, it's like an eyesore to a great neighborhood. That's, that's an emotional part of it. There are two houses on that block, on that property, but the, the proposal says that that tower will, will be placed right adjacent to what was the old Roosevelt School. And what about that setback? There are occupants in there, there are, there's a children's school in there, and there had been daycare in there. We don't know. The church is there. We're glad they're there, you know? They're, they keep the property up and stuff like that. And, and it also is a preservation with having occupants there to having a playground, which we're really needing in that neighborhood. That's like the only playground within driving, you know, you have to drive other places. And in a very moderate-based income area, it's, it's like, how can one tower, you know, tower so much above, you know, a neighborhood to really affect it? But there are safety concerns. Not only is there a tower, no matter what they put up there, there is a building that's adjacent to it, that has barbed wire and an eight-foot fence to put around it. Looking out over the neighborhood, we've lived there for 37 years. We've seen kids climb anything to get on top of the school roof, and to play up there, to throw things up above it. A testimony last week, or last time, said that one of the people there was one of the people who climbed up on stuff. We think it's a safety issue. No matter if it's a pencil-like tower, or whatever, the things around it, it's a safety-like issue. Not to mention how I think it'll affect property values. We are in the process of building and working with the city in a, a site plan of our own for adding a garage to our house, within, you know, the setbacks that are there. We want to, and others want to improve their properties. Recently, then, I talked to a neighbor who was in the process of remodeling a house right across the street. I don't know if it's within the setback, but with the purpose of reselling it. He goes, right away, when he heard about the tower coming up, he goes, well, there goes all my investment in this place, you know? Because it's not, I think it's a discouragement to improvement of a moderate-based neighborhood, but of a very close one, and like you said, dense, densely populated one. My last question, though, is where are kids going to play in our neighborhood? It's a place where a lot of people can't afford, you know, to bus their kid, not, or to take their kids everywhere. So, they walk around the neighborhood, they play in the, on the playground. There's soccer pickup games and basketball pickup games there. I have a hard time believing that it's going to be preserved in this neighborhood with, with that tower, or one that's 10 feet less, or whatever it would be, to meet a setback. And what happens if that setback there, what happens to the people in the building? You know? It could fall on that as easily as it could fall on anything. The, the tower is right adjacent to the building. So, I don't, maybe that's a question I have for zoning and planning, but, you see? So, the, the, if it's a matter of numbers, I have, I talked to quite a few people, but many could not come, you know, because of work and stuff, and for fear of their jobs. That almost further impacts the neighborhood, and I'm, I'll give a little skepticism here. I think US Cellular, from what I've seen, they have another pending thing going on at Hamilton and Fourth Street. And, and does US Cellular target church buildings that have playgrounds, or maybe a parking lot nearby, to try to... That's a cynical comment, but it seems like a pattern to me.
This would be their third one to answer your question.
Yes. And, and I would have a question. I think the council, didn't you not approve a 15-foot tower a while back? Is that right, or did I get that wrong? I read up some news about it.
Chris?
The Fibrocom towers that are kind of scattered throughout town, those essentially replaced a streetlight.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They're mini cell towers.
There's lots of them. You don't know they're cell towers, but they're all over the place.
Yeah, yeah.
So, it can be done differently, to answer your question.
Okay. Well, that's, that's my two cents worth from...
Thank you.
From a near neighbor, thanks.
I would encourage the neighbors to pay attention to your state legislature, because we used to have a lot more control over towers than we have today, because the cellphone lobbyist is a lot stronger than you are. And so, you might want to go to some of your neighborhood meetings about when the legislators are here on Saturday morning, and express your concerns, because I can almost tell you, when this fails, there will be a state legislative bill, probably this session yet, because the cell, the, the US Cellular will make sure they tell their lobbyists in Des Moines to take this control away from cities, because councils are too difficult to deal with. They will want to put these, as you might imagine, anywhere they darn well feel. So, I would encourage you to, or you might be coming back here someday, and we won't have any control over it, is what I'm trying to tell you, because we used to have a lot more control over these towers than what we have today. And we have very limited control over them, so voice your concerns to your state legislators, because they, as you know, have the power to take these type of issues away from us, and they have, and they will continue to.
Anyone else to be heard?
I'm Sherri Johnson, 2005 Villa Avenue. I guess I just have a couple concerns. When we received this letter, I got it on a Tuesday night, and we're required to be here on the following Tuesday. Bitter cold weather, trying to get around to talk to your neighbors is about impossible. But in our neighborhood, we have a very diverse neighborhood, a wonderful neighborhood. We don't always communicate with words, but food, produce. Mr. Lee, who lives right on that property, he's not able to know even what we're talking about. His wife recently passed. He was in the hospital the week before we had the last meeting. I just feel like it's not very fair. And then I wonder, what other properties have you made adjustments for other people's neighborhoods? You know, are you being fair to our neighborhood? The people that work in my neighborhood, they can't be here tonight. They already took off for the last time. And so, you want to defer, and, you know, I just don't think it's very fair. Wish you'd come out and look at our neighborhood. We have a great one. You know, John does a block party every year, shuts the block off, people barbecue, they roast a hog. It's a great place to live, so, and I've lived there for 35 years. Thank you.
Thank you.
And just so you know, we voted down the deferment. There's not, it's not going to be deferred. Correct. It's not being deferred. We're voting on it now.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I'm Bill Carter. I live at 1923 Villa Avenue, and I've lived there for 35 years or better. And I tell you, the neighborhood, like you say, people are worried about their values going down, and I just can't see why they wanted to come into our neighborhood unless they figured it was such a lower neighborhood, income neighborhood, that no one would care. But you know what? We do care. We care what our neighborhood's like. You're going to get people come in, they see a creepy old tower, or something like that, and they're going to say, maybe I don't want to move in there. It's an eyesore. As, as if right now, we do have a substation right up the street, electrical substreet. And there's a main line that runs down Turner Street, right on down alongside the property there. And, you know, that's right in the 100, 200-foot. You know, what happens if something hits that? That's a big problem. I've had breakers go off in my backyard from that substation. It is loud, so you know there's a lot of power going down through there. And, you know, we're already trying to be safe in that neighborhood, let alone you guys trying to put more and more on us. And I just can't see why they, you know, in the other parts of the city that's already been turned down because of the 200, why they even insisted wanting to stay, do it. This way here, they know it's, it won't pass. There's no way. And you put that tower right alongside a building. It, that can be more, what, 6 inches from the building? Any footings they put in there is going to probably weaken that old building. I don't care what you say. That's an old, old building, and the footings, I don't care what they do, are going to weaken it. And like you say, you have kids that are in there all the time. And they have church services, something like that. Are they going to take the responsibility for those people if they get hurt? Are they going to take on themselves? Oh, yeah. We could take X amount of dollars a month, you know? And, you know, if you guys get hurt, it's your problem, not ours. No. That's not going to fly. I say, this neighborhood, we, I got 12 grandkids, and my kids come over. We'd love to take them over there. It's great that the church lets us do it. There is no place in the neighborhood for the kids to play. And that's all it is. And you're not going to stop no kid at all from trying to climb over everything. Like I said, for years and years, they've been climbing up or the top of that building, and they're going to climb up on the top of the fence. They don't care what it is. If there's a will, there's a way. They're going to get through there. And something, someone's going to get hurt. And we just, we don't need it. And I thank you very much.
You.
Thank you.
All right, where were we at on the roll call? Yeah.
Capron?
Hi.
Greckin?
Hi.
Moore?
Hi.
Gatt?
Hi.
Waters?
Hi.
Passes 5-0.
Okay.
So, it was denied?
Yeah, it was denied.
It's denied. 19 is a hearing in ordinance rezoning properly, commonly known as 325 West 45th Street. P&amp;Z recommends approval of this item.
For both 19 and 20, we kind of, we kind of heard this as, as basically one item, since they're both tied together in that, and it was passed unanimously, you know, without a ton of discussion.
Counsel, I would point out that the title listed on the RCA does not match the title on the resolution or the hearing in ordinance, but the titles listed on the resolution and the hearing in ordinance are correct. Just for clarification.
Is there anything we need to do?
No, because it's the RCA, so you don't need to amend it.
I'll move 19.
Second.
Would you like to say anything, Dr. Paulsroot?
No, it's just, I just want to back to the...
Well, it's good to see you. We're going to do everything we can to get this sold, because we know, you know, you need help, and we're going to... Still waiting for you to buy that lunch for me that you promised, but good to see you, Doc. Call the roll, please.
Greckin?
Hi.
Wait a minute, we didn't have a second.
Yeah, you do. Waters? Greckin?
Hi.
Moore?
Stane, conflict of interest.
Gatt?
Hi.
Waters?
Hi.
Capron?
Hi.
Anybody opposed to waiving the statutory rule?
No.
I'll move that.
Second. Moore?
Stane.
Gatt?
Hi.
Waters?
Hi.
Capron?
Hi.
Greckin?
Hi.
I'll move second and third.
Okay. Gatt?
Hi.
Waters?
Hi.
Capron?
Hi.
Greckin?
Hi.
Moore?
Stane.
20 is a resolution approving the final plot of Pine Acres 2nd Edition. P&amp;Z recommends approval of this item. I'll move it.
Second.
Capron?
Hi.
Greckin?
Hi.
Moore?
Stane.
Gatt?
Hi.
Waters?
Hi.
Hey, you're good, Doc. All right, good to see you. 21 is a hearing in ordinance vacating the alley adjacent at 1109 West 26th Street and 1114 27th Street. P&amp;Z recommends approval of this item.
This one, we recommend, we recommended to approve vacation on a 5-1 vote. The recommendation at the time from, for, to us as P&amp;Z was to deny the vacation. There has been some additional information that's come to light, have the staff. There's some additional information that we did not have when we took the vote at the P&amp;Z meeting, which we talked about, and it probably should be shared.
The day after the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, I did learn that the home located on 1109 West 26th Street had been sold, and there was an incorrect legal description. It was not filed, and we didn't know that information prior. The, the woman who owns 1109 West 26th Street, the current owner, was at the meeting and did speak in support of the item. I did speak with her the following day, and she is support, was supportive of the item if she could purchase the, the whole of the alley, because her, the only access to her garage is that 12-foot alleyway. And then, if, if she could not purchase the entire width of the alley, then, then she was opposed to the vacation. She is not the petitioner. She is not the one that is requesting this vacation.
So, what, did she think she could buy the alley?
Yes, and she would have the, obviously, have the opportunity to purchase half of it.
Half of it.
But six feet access is, is pretty impossible to access a garage.
I think I can speak for the commission in the sense that if we had this information, it would have been a little, I don't know that, I don't know if the voter would have changed it or not, but it definitely would have been something we would have had to consider, that we've got, that we didn't know at the time, that probably may be able to change the equation for us and how we looked at the, the item.
Can't hardly deny someone access to their garage.
Right. I do believe that the woman who owns 1109 West 26th is in the audience. If she would like to speak, she certainly may, but I do believe she's here.
Go ahead, let Brian speak first. Go ahead.
Brian Farrenholz, 2620, 28th Street. Obviously, excuse me, this alley grants access to our Crescent Park building right there, which we use quite frequently in order to get to the playground area, so we were not in support of this idea. The planning and zoning meeting that I attended, it just simply went along, because we had the tower situation, and I, I had another commitment. I had to take off, so I couldn't speak to it there, so. The district, though, is in support of declining or denying this vacation.
This lady that has the garage?
Yes, this is the home located on your screen here, and the garage is here.
My name's Emily Mendez. I live in 1109 West 26th Street. I had spoken for the vacation of the alleyway, but after, you know, learning, or like, not really fully paying attention, mostly because we were like trying to figure out whether or not we were for or against the vacation of the alleyway, I had spoken for it. And then, after learning, you know, that it was not, that we couldn't purchase a whole alleyway, we were against it, because that would, in a sense, limit our access to our garage. So, I am actually against it.
Okay.
At first, a vacation sounds like a good thing, right?
It does, it does, but then, you know, you learn more things, and...
No doubt.
It's a good thing you learned it before you.
Yeah, exactly.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else to be heard? Oh, I'll move the item, but this one, we would vote no on if we wanted to deny.
Okay, so...
Vote, vote no.
No, you want to deny.
Okay, so if we deny it, then that means it's done, right?
Right.
Okay.
A second?
Call the roll, please.
Do you have a second?
We have a second, but Alex did, but...
Greckin?
No.
Moore?
Stane.
Gatt?
No.
Waters?
No.
Capron?
No. Thank you.
So, it'll stay open as a public right of way. 22 is a hearing in ordinance vacating a portion of Riverside Park located at 100 Riverside Boulevard. P&amp;Z recommends approval of this item. First consideration passed February 4th, second consideration passed February 11th. I'll move third reading.
Second.
Dan?
Moore?
Hi.
Gatt?
Hi.
Waters?
Hi.
Capron?
Hi.
Greckin?
Hi.
23 is a hearing and resolution approving plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost of the 2018 annual resurfacing project phase two. I'll move that.
Okay. Gatt?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Cassis, 5-0.
24th, a hearing and resolution approving plans and specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost of the 2020 annual surfacing project phase one. I'll move that. Second.
Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Gatt?
Aye.
Cassis, 5-0.
25th, a hearing and resolution approving plans and specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost of the 2020 annual resurfacing project phase two. I'll move that. Second.
Capron?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Gatt?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Gatt?
Aye.
Cassis, 5-0.
Gordon, how many dollars is this compared to what we've done last year?
I'm sorry.
How many dollars is this, these three projects?
I think it was around 3.2.
And how many dollars did we do last year?
Last, last fiscal year, about 700,000.
So...
There's a headline.
At least four and a half times as much money being spent on streets this year in this area than we spent.
And that's, that's just resurfacing.
I understand that. I'm just talking. We haven't done a big resurfacing. I want the public to know that we're doing a big resurfacing.
Mayor, if you could speak in the microphone really closely and loudly.
We're doing lots of resurfacing compared to what we've done in the past. I want the public to know that.
It's a positive thing. Like, things that should be on the news. A positive thing.
Okay. Thanks, Gordon. Thank you, Gordon. I knew the numbers. I just wanted you to tell us. And when you consider the large scale of that, it's actually five times as much because you've never done one large enough to get any economy. So that's the good news. 26th, a hearing and resolution approving plans, specs, form of contract, and estimated cost of Lewis and Clark parking lot project. I'll move that. Second.
Capron?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Gatt?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Cassis, 5-0.
28th, a hearing and resolution approving a proposal to sell certain real property and authorizing a city deed to the vacated alley in the vacated Darling Avenue abutting 901 St. Mary's Street, Fishner's Alley, and Seawall. So I'll move that.
Second. Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Gatt?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Cassis, 5-0.
29th, an ordinance amending Chapter 5.20 by increasing fees for solid waste collections. I would like to move to defer this item, knowing that the state legislature might be doing something. So how long can we defer? Should we delete? Well, okay, I'll, let me do, let me put it this way. I move we amend this item first to increase per the contract the 2% fee increase. Second.
Say that again, Mayor?
Well, you're obligated for a 2% fee.
Yes. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. You're separating this.
I'm separating the issues. Go ahead.
Waters?
No, just a minute. No.
I'm sorry.
Keith Baker, Sioux City, Iowa, 2101 Nash. Yeah, I'd like to make a couple of comments on this. I believe this ruling that come down from the state to start with, come about some groups thought seniors were getting a discount that we don't deserve anymore. And you know what? Us seniors are losing a lot of our little discounts. And I believe there's two ways that the city could work a program into this, either for disabled citizens or an income-based program to bring a little bit of a discount back for us. You know, it's just something to think about.
No, I would agree, but I would, I would make the, I would, I would agree that anybody that qualifies for property tax relief across the street, because that'd be a disabled or, or a low-income person, would qualify. I don't have a problem with that, and I think that would be legal. But I don't know that today, so it doesn't matter.
You know, Bob, just like you said, I'm a disabled vet and unemployed, unemployable, and the state of Iowa has offered us a program, no more property taxes, which is a good thing. I think every state in the country should have it. We deserve it.
Nebraska has a better one than Iowa, quite frankly, but...
What's that?
Nebraska has a much better one than Iowa does.
I didn't, never hear about that one. But anyway...
It's a great program.
I, you're right. I believe there, there should be some sort of incentive for being a senior anymore. I mean, the little bit they give us.
And you should know that we care greatly about that. We're not doing anything here to, to go against the senior discount. We're just trying to comply with state law. And now the mayor is separating this, so hopefully we can do things.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, Ted, Ted rep, Mayor said...
Yeah, no, I just want to let you know.
There has been legislation introduced to allow for a senior citizen discount.
Right. Well, Bob's right. There is a plan in the works now to bring it back to the legislature, to bring, bring something back for us.
Yes.
And if you guys could find a way to separate these two.
That's what, that's what basically I'm doing with this motion.
Right. Appreciate it. You know, there's a lot of seniors out there that...
I'm one of you.
It don't seem like much, but...
I'm one of you.
Oh, it's a, it's a lot. It adds up.
Someday, guys, think about it. You're all going to be there.
I already am.
Both of us are. It's a whole study of our sun here. It'll take us some time.
You go in these restaurants anymore? More and more of them are taking away our senior discounts.
You're exactly right. And Alex and I are going to work on it.
Yeah. So by the time we get there, we get a discount.
Yeah. You know, and people forget, you know, me and a couple, me and a couple seniors were talking the other day, believe it or not, it's seniors that's what built this country the way it is now.
Could you say that a lot?
Let's not tear it apart.
You know, my biggest complaint this week was from seniors that didn't know they could have got the discount.
Yeah.
Yeah, no question.
That was my biggest, every client that came in chewed me out that they didn't know they could have got.
And you know, that was number two on the seniors advisory committee list of what needs to be done in this community.
Believe it or not, there's a lot of things out there for us.
You know what number one was? Number one was the streets. Thanks, Gordon.
And it was a positive thing?
Five times.
And there's a lot of things out there for us.
Anyway, we're going to separate the issues today and vote on them separately.
There's a lot of things out there for us that are offered to us. Nobody advertises it. You have to go look for it.
Okay, here's, here's one thing I want to add to this. It was Senator Jackie Smith...
Yes.
And Jim Carlin, a rep, that's, that got this bill going. So I just want to...
They're both senators.
Both senators. And I, I just want to acknowledge both of them.
Well, I've been in contact with her, and she told me that she's the one that's going to try to bring something back for us.
Yep. Thank you.
But even if she doesn't, I think the city attorney has told us that those people that qualify for property relief can be granted relief from this, at least.
So what do we have to do then? So that should be already in the...
Well, we'd have to change our ordinance.
It's already in the treasurer's office, so I really don't have to do anything. I'm already on record that pay no property taxes.
Yeah. Well, I don't know what we'd have to do to get it into our system, but we'll figure that out if that's where it goes.
Well, I appreciate it, guys.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I guess I don't have to bother you anymore.
No, not for a while.
Oh, you're always welcome.
Come back and visit.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I was hoping Ann would be here. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Ann Broderston, Chair of the Senior Advisory Committee. And I don't know what you're going to do, Mayor, here about which, what do you want to vote for this first, or I'm here to speak on behalf regarding the proposed elimination of a senior discount for the garbage.
My motion's going to be to, to delete that today, because I don't think we can defer it that long until such time as the state legislature either votes that up or down.
Okay, I had a really good legal argument why you shouldn't do this and a separate way of doing it. Maybe, you know, give a whole new, low-volume utilization discount for seniors.
Or different sizes.
I mean, just give it a new name. That's all you have to do. And I mean, there's a lot of justification for it.
Yeah, except for that doesn't work because Karen and I rarely, we have a lot more, thanks to me going home at night in the garbage, don't tell her I said that, and getting the stuff in the recycling bin. But...
Mayor!
But...
I tell you why. I'm impressed.
When we have grandkids over and everything else, even though we're not very high volume, it can be a high, we can be high volume.
Right. But you can also have the larger can and pay the higher rate if you want.
Well, we're doing that anyway. In fact, I...
That's what we're talking about.
I have extras because I want to send my grass flipping student.
I've seen your house, Mayor. I know where you live. You have a lot of stuff there.
Too much stuff.
Too much stuff. Join the club. Join the club. Okay, well, I'll just...
Thank you, Ann.
I'll just save my little paper for Dan for the meeting tomorrow.
There you go. 3:30.
Melissa, do you have anything fun you want to, no?
I would just add to Ann's comments that, and, and the mayor's as well, about having a number of people contact us or speak to me over the last week about senior citizen rates. And the biggest issue was if they use, if we, most of them argued that they only put out garbage every other week, or recyclables every other week. And if there was a way for us to come up with some, I don't, that would probably require, I would imagine the...
It's just going to be contracted.
Yeah.
Because it's too difficult to try to...
I, I assume that collectors would have to be able to tell you it was half full or...
Melissa Campbell, Environmental Services Analyst. There are other cities that have programs that you can do, I believe it's like 30, 60, or 90 gallon containers. And then you pay based on what you throw. That's, that's what it's called.
Oh, okay.
Pay-as-you-throw program. But we don't have the containers available for that. So we would consider that in our next contract, offering that service. I think that's a great idea.
Yep.
Reduces waste, hopefully increase recycling, and then offers people that don't have as much garbage possibly a lower rate.
And I think you can also, see if I read it correctly, you can also see what comes back with contract negotiations. Because I think in Omaha, someone even bid that it's not different sizes, but it's every other week. So you can do whether it's every week or every other. I mean, I think that's, we'll just have to look at that with a renegotiation.
You guys are discussing everything I was going to ask about, so I don't, I probably don't have anything to say. But I do have a question. Stevie Lee Wan...
Thank you.
Can you get your name and address, please?
Yep, Stevie Lee Wan, 4714 Correctionville Road, Sioux City. The question I had was, well, one was about the, kind of like what you were talking about. I've heard other communities that have a pay-as-you-throw program, they call it, kind of a catchy little thing. And they do it by amount of plastic bags that are put out. You, you purchase the bags. That's, that's the kind of contract they have with the carrier, the hauler, or the garbage or whatever. So whatever you guys come up with, that would be, so once that contract come up.
Next year.
Next year, beginning of the year, or...
July.
July 1st.
July 1st.
Okay, so you'll probably have more discussion at that time than about that, right? And the other thing was, I guess it was kind of, this was all brought up because of an auditor's report, a state auditor's report from two and a half years ago.
But it was also confirmed by Attorney General's opinion as well.
Yeah, I know, but that was from two and a half years ago. Why did it like take so long to maybe come to that?
We just found out about it.
Huh?
We just found out about it.
Oh, okay. All right. That's, that's why I was wondering, because it sounded like you had to act on this pretty quick. I think you, was it mentioned, maybe you thought you might be, you know, where a lawsuit type thing maybe could happen because of, because of it. But anyway, so it's just that you didn't know about it for, for that length of time. All right. That's all I have then.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The advisory committee stands ready to assist you in any way to try and develop this program so we can have a different rate for seniors and just not call it a senior rate, okay?
Okay.
Dan, you can have all my legal bases.
Thank you. Anyone else? Call the roll, please. Your first motion's on the 2%. Yes.
Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Gatt?
Aye.
Cassis, 5-0.
Okay, before we do third reading, then, I would move that we defer action on the senior citizen discount until such time as the state legislature acts.[1598.82]